July nineteenth, Board of Selectmen.
Yeah.
Yeah, you said.
How we doing?
Good, and you?
Good, we never got together, but it's okay.
Okay, good. Hey Bob?
Hey Peter, how are you?
Good, and you?
Gentlemen, Ian, how are you?
I'm good.
You?
Whose is this?
Yours now.
Ian's. There's some people who just had his mouth washed, did you?
Is that right?
Well, he was really a wayman made by Ian.
I wish, I wish. You know the mouthwash you want, I don't think it is.
What's the alcohol proof on the back of that way?
Something to say.
It's all the, it's probably the alcohol that came from brewing. And that's something strong.
Friend of mine's got a distiller down in Seabrook, and he was ma- he, he made a batch of hand sanitizer when the whole thing started. And he just found people. And then buy booze and maybe his own hands and buy, you know, free. He's a good guy.
Well, he had to use to get clean hands.
Well, I see an alcohol.
Killing germs.
Alcohol eighty percent. Ten percent. How are you?
Not good.
How you doing? Good.
Jason, how are you? Haven't seen you for a while.
I know, just wondering where you been.
All over the road, pal. Not on what I like you, like you.
Okay, yeah.
Hello, you ready? Call me tomorrow. Uh, Michael Colonel, would you please lay this on the plaque to read?
I put the ladies to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Call of the minutes on June twenty eighth. So. Second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Manifest, forty-one thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars and eight, thirty-nine cents dated July one, two hundred forty-two thousand seven hundred forty-one dollars and twenty-six cents dated July eighth, and two hundred forty-one thousand five hundred seven dollars and sixty cents dated July twenty-first, twenty-one. Big a motion?
Motion approved. Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, facility requests, half marathon, September twenty-ninth, from eight to noon.
Which marathon is that?
It's, um...
Is that a new one?
No, it's not a new one.
It's a different form, that's all.
Yes, different form, but it's, they've done it every year, except last year, of course. And through, it's, it doesn't last very long, it's on a Sunday morning. The file chief and police chief both.
They're all involved in it?
Yeah.
They all got covered?
Who, who runs it and who, who does it benefit?
I don't know. In the facility use tab?
Yeah, but it's, uh...
Does it say? I go through the, um, it's local sports.
Fourteen half minute, yeah. Half minute, five K.
So it's mainly on McIntyre?
Right, exactly. It starts up, I think, at the Mercedes dealership. Exactly, the Mercedes dealership in English.
They, they always, we have, I can't tell you who the sponsors. What, what is this?
We have the, that's actually the start of the, they have to get permission from the state DOT
Okay.
to, uh, health, fitness, and charity, local sports. In their facility use request form.
They usually got on the safety, they can see it now, they have a tent up there and they...
Right, right, right. I mean, I think, it's not till September ninth, if you guys wanna delay it, and I'll put it back in. I thought I, I just messed up my paperwork, but...
Thank you. All right. Dock rules. And we've, you've sent our letter to, uh, all the people who have, I think, it was covered in there, the people who have used the facility, and I see some here tonight. Peter, there's a couple of names, I, one name I can't think. His boat isn't there, but he only, in the morning, ran off the dock. The guy that lives down the street, Norm.
Norm, haven't seen him in a while, he traded in his...
He got a pontoon boat.
Boston, Boston Whaler for a, uh...
Pontoon?
Pontoon boat.
Yeah, I hadn't seen anybody.
Yeah, he was there for maybe a week last year?
Yeah. Okay, I have to think of that this afternoon. Uh, is anybody here, Jason, we are here, to have votes, uh, can you just about, you've set it up? Peter, you got one call or a letter?
I got an email from Jim.
Jim Bradco?
Yes, and he was questioning the requirement for the nine-foot painter on the skiff. And I said, you can keep your boat tight to the dock. The nine-foot painter is only there if you want, if the, the number of skiffs require you to stagger them.
Yeah.
Then the length of line allows you to get more skiffs in there.
Yeah, make, make it more, yeah.
Yeah. But so far, we're good, you know?
That was your change there, the nine-foot painter?
Yeah.
Well...
Well, uh...
Oh, those, uh...
Oh, yeah, I, I saw them, but that was like one of the current different changes.
Yes.
Okay. I was okay with that, but if your, if your vote leaves, you know, your outboard bangs against the vote next year and vice versa, so...
So, people...
I see what you're saying though, I mean, that makes sense.
Yeah, it's only for flexibility.
Sure.
Rather have it tight.
Right.
And if you get too many, you put along a line, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So far, that hasn't come to that.
Okay.
Greg?
And, uh, other than that, I've had no feedback.
Jason, give it to me.
Um, we, uh, nothing overly, those steps obviously are, that's a bad... Those steps are, uh, lost or waiting to happen.
Yeah.
Um...
You come down a lot just before you hit to the, the platform.
Yeah.
The lefts, you know, they're just really bushy steps, and the board across there is not gonna hold up, and I see people crawling underneath it now and then, it's like, yeah. So, I, and I did notice that, um, the retainer for the parking area is starting to dip more, you've noticed that when you pull in? It's like a big...
Is it washing out, Jason, or...
I wouldn't say washing, it's just settling more.
You mean right there at the...
At the, on the top, on the, where you park? The east side, when you pull in to the right?
Well, yeah, because at the steps, we have a situation where the earthwork, as you approach the pier, is beginning to fail, not the lower portion, because that's heavy rock or boulders. But the upper portion of one side, we have two, two, uh, pilings, if you will, on both sides tied together with, uh, one is a metal, uh, rod that is chained to the outside pilings. And the other is a galvanized, it looks like, uh, an old guide wire from the telephone pole.
Are you, you're talking about that's on the gangway, at the top of the gangway before the little deck?
Yes.
Okay, I was talking to parking lot, oh, okay.
Right, right. All right, I, I extrapolated from that.
Oh, okay, that one's not so good either, is that what you're saying?
Yes, well, the, it, the rod that ties the two pilings together has done, has got about a seventy-five percent material loss. So there's only about that much holding it together, so we'll need to fix that in the future. Uh, and you and I, Martha, have talked about that, and we probably need, I, I forget his name, but to design and permit and improvement, it's, it's not an immediate failure, but...
Future.
Yeah, and...
Probably what we should do, get somebody in there this year, have them review it, see what the cost is, and get some estimates, and then we can look at it for next year.
I'd recommend it.
Can I just, so, a, a couple of years ago, a friend of mine was coming up fishing, and he does, um, he does permitting in Maine for docks and stuff. And he just happened to look and said, this is a great spot, you guys have so much potential here. Um, you could literally build a marina in that cove. I'm not saying that, any marina, but it's really, like, feasible to actually do that, so thirty years down the road, who knows, maybe you guys can have a marina. But he did, he, we watched the tides and stuff, and you, you, you won't be, we'll, we'll get you down there.
Well, you know, if you shake a bag, I'm gonna shake them one down there.
So are we talking more gravel on the other, the east side, Jason, is that what you're...
By the back on?
Where it's settling?
Yeah, well, when you drive in, when you get, when you drive just before the, the little port of, port of body on the right there, if you pull up in, you can feel that your vehicle dipped down.
Right there on the rim.
So, um...
Did that be filled in paint with, uh...
Yeah, a couple of years ago, Lenny put some larger rock in there. And I hadn't noticed that the, uh... Old telephone pole or...
This, they're heading that way, I mean, they're still there, but they're, um, kinda settling down.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, because there is a culvert that starts on the other side of the road and runs under the road, and...
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't realize that, oh, it does, doesn't it, that's right, yeah.
So, if those pilings fail, they're gonna come down and possibly block the culvert. So it's something that we ought to pay attention to. So I think Lenny can fix it with, uh, the, uh, tractor, if it's running, by, you know, moving them in.
When you see, when you see stuff like that, Jason or Peter, take a picture or two and just drop them off to us so we can kind of look at it.
Yeah.
Then I'll go down, take a look at it on my own eyesight and check it out, but the thing is, I, I haven't been down here for a while, so I haven't looked at it.
If you didn't really pull in far enough, you wouldn't notice the, whoa, where we going here, so...
Well, I know they did some work there, uh, last year, didn't they?
Peter, Peter and, uh, and Chip DeSerra.
But you didn't quite get over that side, right, you just got over the center?
Well, yeah, we...
And the walkway.
That and the walkway, yes, we resurfaced... Resurfaced the road with the reclaimed asphalt. It needs to be touched up, but Chip has not, he volunteered to use his, uh, grader to straighten it out, but he hasn't had the time. So it's becoming a little washboard.
Cause, cause the water has, the, well, the water we've had this year.
Yeah, the water hasn't bothered, bothered it.
No, it's held together pretty good.
It's just washboard.
You did a good job.
Yeah.
I was impressed by myself, I did a good job.
It worked good, Lenny just re-graded some of the road, so...
Yeah.
But he's limited on what he can do with that Oshkosh, because it's just a straight blade, he can't tip it or turn it much.
Right, okay.
So, we, if he brought down the, uh, the, uh, Kubota with the grader blade behind it, we could do something with that.
Okay.
But it, and it should be done soon before it gets out of hand.
Right. Prevent, prevent a maintenance, what it's called.
Yeah.
So you're saying you'd have an engineer kind of look at it and see what needs, okay. So that, that marina comment is just like, you know, if you're gonna go that far, make sure you have the footprint that you could actually,
Expand on.
You know, for twenty years to now, you could get onto it, but, um, so, sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, another revenue source. Yeah, so...
Last year, the fire department was a big help when you were down, it was, they packed it down below the water like that.
Yeah, yeah, that worked out pretty good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else you want to do about the rules, anybody have any suggestions, or just little drop them the way they are? Whatever?
I believe the way they're written in the board's book is for twelve traps under nu- number three.
Yeah.
And I believe Peter wanted to adjust that to twenty traps.
Twenty.
I'm not sure how that is reasoning for that.
Well, we had, uh, a Mr. Smith that was fishing with eighty traps.
Yeah.
And one day, he brought all eighty traps and put them on the dock.
And, how long did he say that?
Until Ted tried to come to the dock with his boat.
And then they were...
And then they were gone.
He didn't make, he didn't make an appointment.
Uh, so New Hampshire has five-trap recreation, a hundred-trap part-time commercial, those are the two licenses available.
Right.
So, um, you know, to put, to put a number limit on it, it's like, I don't know, but it's, the dock, the trap shouldn't sit on the dock ever, they should go there, end of the boat, gone.
Yes.
It's not, and your main concern would be the bait, not the traps, cause that's gonna leave a trail of juice in. You go down there and sit there, people don't wanna deal with that.
Yeah, we've had it that couple of times, but that individual has moved to another island.
Right.
Hopefully, one, one...
See, I can, I guess the unloading, loading practice, I mean, I've done that so many years, I understand it, but I was courteous enough to get them out, excuse me, get them out of the way.
Right, yeah.
By the end of the day, that makes sense to me, but I, we have to actually put it in writing?
Well, sometimes you have to.
Courteousness, so I, I guess wasn't the thought, you wasn't thinking, maybe? But, yeah, I mean, if you had eighty come in that came out of the ocean, they're, they're dirty, you get mud and seaweed and little crap, it did make some mess, so if you don't clean up...
Kids get out and swim off the docks.
Yeah, I understand that.
There's no walkways down there, hose is down.
I used to drop mine on the mud plus at high tide, and pick them at low tide, but walking down there, you can't do that up there, you could get kids up there, so I understand the problem. I don't have any problems if you wanna change it to twenty traps, I don't care.
All right, is that agreeable? The, um, number fourteen, that is an issue that's gonna keep going unless we start doing something about it?
I have talked to the police chief, and he has increased controls down there to enforce the, uh, either the resident pass or the guest pass requirement.
I was down there last week to go down, I was gonna go down to the point, every car that was down there was out of staters, and none of them were Newington residents.
Really? I've seen it, so I don't, I've seen it, great days with it, and...
Yeah, we did, I just, it was a nice day, went, was gonna go down, have lunch down at the point, and...
Quick fun?
Yeah, I turned around to the, to the regard, it was...
Me, out of pocket, we had an out-of-state cars left at the...
Now, I think what you should do is just call the police department, the guy or, or who he knows about, and he'll be down there, and they'll address it.
As a PD issue, sure.
The chief and police department are very good.
They're aware of it at this point, 'cause I talked about it too.
I haven't seen it too bad there, I hadn't noticed that, I mean...
It's gotten, but I, but I have seen the police down there.
Oh, yeah, right down there, a lot more, for sure.
But it just added that one day, you know, you caught it just right, and... I think the colder restricted the beaches and restricted a lot of areas, and I think people just searched out different places, and they found this, and they found other places like it. Then like the forest we said, I go, walk by there a couple of Sundays, and can't get in there, plus it...
Right.
Which nobody was ever there, it's just people were looking for places to go, and they found the, the hideaway, which is too bad. Yeah, but I think, I would suggest, if you see anybody, please call PD, and they'll address it.
Yeah, now, and, and there's one other thing, and I think there was, used to be a sign facing outward on the dock that says, for Newington residents only. And that sign has disappeared.
Let's get a sign made, then.
Yeah.
How big a sign was it, Peter?
I think, about twice the size of a license plate.
Yeah, it was like a, like a poster, almost, a little bit smaller than the planet tree.
Okay, that's, that's anything, something they can't say they didn't see it.
Yeah, well, if you walk down the gangway, there's a sign there that says, you know, this dock is for Newington residents only. But there have been two occasions, one of which Jason saw, and one of which I encountered, was with people who are not Newington residents leaving their boat on the dock, and leaving, I mean, leaving the area. So you can't land the boat.
Yeah, plugs it up?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I just tied up to him, uncomfortable, you know, wrapped him around the boat. Yeah, the people on my boat were fine, but if someone had an issue, you'd have to climb out of my boat and then their boat, and then on the dock, it's just not... So I think we figured out who that was, I did, did some research, but, yeah, it was someone visiting someone in town, and, you know, just kind of happened to think, oh, but, you know, again, the courteous, courtesy factor, and you could use the dock, but just be there and move your boat, or catch lines, or can't just leave it there, so, so that, you know, I think that's kind of been taking care of that person too.
Well, yeah, okay.
I mean, that's not a PD issue though, is it, to, to, I mean, they're not gonna...
Well, I think if it gets out of hand, if we ask...
If it gets out of hand, we're gonna address it, but right now, the occasional one, I don't think.
Yeah.
Somebody's broken down the hell.
That's different.
Well, yeah, but I mean, the rules say that if it's broken down, you can ask the dock master.
Right.
So he knows that the dock, the boat's gonna be there. But, uh, we just need to, uh, enforce the rules. I, I figure if we get some resistance from somebody, then I will just call the PD.
Right, yeah, oh, yeah, no good, yeah, it's not, no, it's...
So if we could have another sign prompted to go down on the dock facing out, that would be great.
Well, there's one there right now, says unloading and, loading and unloading only.
Yeah, but it doesn't say anything about Newington residents only.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay, all right.
You all say?
Anything else, anybody else?
Motion on this or what?
Yeah, mostly.
I'll make a motion, we accept the recommendations and add to it the sign to be made down there saying Newington residents only.
Okay.
Good. I'll second that.
Thank you.
Spread the discussion, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Pointing to the dock master, Peter Welch, uh, Chip DeSerra has been the dock master the last couple of years, Peter's been his assistant. And, uh, Chip informed me a few weeks ago that he just doesn't have the time, he'll still work with Peter, still work on the dock, still work on the road, and like that, but he just doesn't wanna have the, the title or responsibility anymore, so, Michael?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we accept Peter Welch as our dock master, if he's agreeable with us.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Not too much hard work for you, Peter?
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
You did another job.
Thank you, Jason.
Thanks, Jason. All right, the, uh, new business, date to meet with the library trustees. We got, you got a letter from them June twenty-second with, uh, several things on it, and my recommendation, and I think is that we should meet with them in the meeting and discuss all the, and whatever things that come up.
I agree.
When's our next BOS meeting?
On the August second.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that, could we, so are we able to, we put that on the agenda? Yeah. Great. Thank you.
That's a primary, uh, little date or time on it, right, Martha?
At, uh, five o'clock.
We have a slips.
That would traditionally be the time, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and tennis racket donations, uh...
Del Brum.
Del Brum running a lot of record, or has a lot of records that brought them in, right?
Right.
Just adults and...
And children, yes.
And, uh...
Where they keeping them?
Right now, they're out front in the selectmen's office.
Okay. Cause I'm sure that if they're gonna be using them, they, they want them on the weekends, and we're not gonna be here.
No, I mean, that's, give them to the school, donate them to the school, so the kids can use them in practice, and they have them in the...
Reset.
Okay, I wasn't sure what they were planning on doing, so...
No, no, I think, no, no, that's something...
Daryl's donating them to the town, so whoever it would be, you know?
How many of them are there?
About seven, seven or eight, yeah.
I wish to send a thank you, uh, for the Dallas Selectmen, and, and we're very appreciative of his donation.
Right.
You don't need a motion for that, do you?
No.
Just proceed. And thank you, that's a very, very gracious thing to do.
Okay, next we'll go on to FEMA grant application. Motion to accept and expand twelve thousand six hundred seventy-one dollars and seven cents for Emergency Management Association Grant Fund.
And what, what are we spending it on?
This is the, uh... The grant for all the COVID expenditures, everything from the masks and gloves to, um, the PD had to provide coverage at the mall to keep it secure during COVID, uh, firehead and number items on the list, to transfer station.
That's a, a Dell when you're needing at this point, Martha, do you know?
Yes, we, this will take care of it.
And make a motion to, uh, proceed?
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I have a question.
Oh, excuse me.
Um, if you receive the grant, will you be reimbursing the departments for the money that came out of their budgets for COVID expenses?
No, we don't, we don't let you guys eat that, cause we will.
I don't know.
So...
You didn't specify, thank you.
Uh, this was a twenty-twenty expenditure.
Right.
So I wanna check with the finance director to find out exactly how...
Right, I knew that, it's two different years, that was my point.
Yep.
Well, we'll tend to it, I mean, very quick, Martha.
I'll get back.
Okay, thank you.
And anticipated funds for the fire department, hundred eighteen thousand four hundred dollars. We accept anticipated funds for the fire department COVID vaccine services in the amount of a hundred eighteen thousand four hundred.
Oh, that's the part that we just talked about?
No, this is...
A separate, right, this is for the vaccinations.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah, it's here. Very sure, I'll make a motion, we, go ahead and do it.
Second.
Second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Again, does this, this go back into your budget, Chief, does that how they work?
No, that'll show as a deficit, because it goes back into the general fund, so, I mean, I don't know. Because our, I think, there's a dollar, there's a zero on that line, so it's gonna show as a negative.
The COVID line, Chief, or was it?
No, is that your detail line?
This is, remember Cheryl, um, had called the auditors, and they said that, that we can adjust our budget to show a hundred and eighteen more revenue, and a hun- and that, um, deficit on yours, so it will even out, so you won't have to carry that. Still gonna show, but we can adjust the budget so it doesn't adversely affect your budget.
My understanding is, there's going to be a line added at the bottom of your regular budget that has the one hundred eighteen thousand in it?
Okay.
I could be corrected, but that's what I...
With explanation, huh?
So then you'll be able to expand it and...
Yeah, no, just have to tweak, because I think retirement right now is coming out of the actual retirement line, not out of the detail line, so how that's gonna come back in and that type of stuff, so... So, so the clinic's done, so we have time to figure out exactly where
Okay.
things can get dropped into.
Yeah, we could do, you know, the detail of those other ones and figure out, and then, yeah.
And that's a question.
I think it's important to point out, though, a hundred and eighteen is not a wash, it's not money in, money out. Um, the town received approximately nine thousand dollars
Just shy.
Because, just shy of it, because, um, the town received a portion of every hourly, um, rate that firefighters worked on COVID vaccines. So that is a plus of the hundred and eighteen that is in the general fund.
That'll be explained, I'm sure, somehow, right, Martha?
Absolutely.
Chief, is that basically like the, the PD when the control room...
So just like ours is a mirror of the PD's.
We bill them out at fifty-five, but we pay them forty-eight, we make seven bucks every hour, they run...
Exactly.
Or some, yeah, probably with it, yeah.
Okay.
Right, so in, in terms of the revenue that, that we contribute, the almost nine thousand, um, was part of the revenue to date from COVID vaccine clinic?
Thank you for the question.
Thank you, thank you, Anne.
Okay. Next, tennis court tree trimming status, Martha.
I've contacted the enforcer twice so far, and have not received a reply regarding the recommendation on the trees, right? I did take some pictures that I believe the board saw of the trees, and Len went down there and trimmed the remaining two branches. There is an issue with, uh, cars being parked down there, and whether they are actually residents or not at the tennis court. I didn't, when I was down there on the weekend, I didn't recognize any of the cars or any of the tennis players, so...
Well, just like the marina, I, I think we're, we're probably gonna wind up, you know, better signage, but we also had talked about a cipher lock for the tennis courts. Putting a cipher lock on it and have the rec department be responsible for, you know, if a resident wants to, to use the tennis courts, and they, and anybody that violates that and gives the cipher out to a, a, you know, somebody. And I, I have no problem if a town resident, um, goes over to play tennis, and, and their tennis partner is from, you know, Rye, or I don't care, that, he's, he's there with the resident, so, you know, but, um, to give out the cipher lock, um, which we installed once, um, would, would cause us, you know, to have to reset the cipher lock, and then I think we, we'd wind up, um, you know, maybe, you know, some sort of penalty, like one year without, you know, access to the tennis courts or something.
Something we should discuss with the director committee.
Yeah, yeah, I think we should talk to the rec department.
Why don't have them come in in the fall, after the summer program, we'll recap of that.
Yeah, that's a great idea, I'd recommend it fall. Yeah, that's a great idea, I think that's a great idea, have them come in in the fall.
As long as you're making signs for the docks.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, you're ahead of you on that.
And certainly make them enough of them and large enough so that when a police officer shows up, it's, you know, painfully apparent that just point, you don't belong here.
Yeah, well, we need to talk about town, you know, the police, I think I'd like to get the chief in here and, and get his opinion on, um, you know, enforcing town ordinances like that.
Why do we have ordinances, they have to be enforced, that's the only, all or town ordinances, you have them to enforce them. And again, if there was an accident or any kind of a scuffle down there, the town becomes liable, they're not town residents.
And certainly safety's been brought up as an issue over there with.
Absolutely.
Leaves and things, so.
How about if we have like a half dozen signs made up?
People just take them down, I mean, I hate to be the.
Okay, well.
A wet blanket, but as soon as we put them up, people take them down.
Even if they're bolted to a post?
Yes.
Really? That's theft of town property that the chief can definitely get involved in that.
Then they say, oh, there wasn't a sign.
Huh.
That's our, my past experience.
Yeah?
Little record on this.
Well, well, the, the, I think, well, good point here, that we'll meet with the rec board, we'll close out for the summer program.
Okay.
And then we'll sit down and go over these things and have the police chief and see how he wants it to work and enforce this. Okay. Structural review of the fire station update.
Uh, in your packets, you have, uh, printed out three engineers that the chief and I have come up with recommendations for, uh, HSS Engineering Summit and JSN. These, um, these are all, I, I'm not familiar with HSS, but the other two firms are very capable structural engineering firms. HSS discusses thirty-seven years of experience in designing and analyzing.
It's the, the town hall in North Hampton, a couple of years ago, I believe, they did a, like, you did an architectural review or whatever, it's that semi.
Got it, okay.
Do you have a recommendation, uh, proceed, do you have any of your documents also?
Shannon Alters, uh, recommended JSN, uh, Jeff Nowacki, one of that group, and, um, I believe Eric from Altus has recommended Robert Champagne from Summit.
Exactly what are they gonna be doing on that?
Reviewing the fire department for, uh, the potential of adding a second floor, will the issue of cinder blocks be, make it impossible?
Yep.
Or is there some other way to shore up the cinder block foundation? And determination of options, so what about expansion to the side, uh, of the building?
Who's gonna be with these, uh, this engineer, who's gonna be the town contact, the building inspector?
No, the administrator.
Town administrator?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause some of the, some of the selectmen, some of the buildings, the buildings come out of the selectmen.
That's correct, that's why I'm asking, I thought it would be the building inspector, but if you think.
Well, we're here.
I think it should be both, to be honest with you, but.
And I'm sure the chief would wanna be involved.
Yeah.
Oh, I, I didn't, I didn't mean to leave him out, I don't know, I don't mean it that way, but I just wanna make sure all the bases are covered, so when we get this, uh, this estimate, we'll know what we do.
You have a recommendation on the engineer chief?
I do not.
No?
No. Would it make sense for you to interview me?
That's in their per view.
Or certainly to sit in on that, because you know, certainly.
So we gotta put this up to bid, that we're.
Do it tonight, for comfortable. Oh, we can put it up, we're ending it down, doesn't matter, I.
Well, I like the idea for the things off the bid, because that we're there, okay, in this, this crazy time right now, it could be ten cents today and twenty-five cents tomorrow, you know what I'm saying? That's how crazy the bid is.
You already have calls from the state?
I did have an opportunity to talk to JSN.
Yeah.
About, uh, what a potential cost would be, he said he doesn't want to waste the town's money if he were chosen, he, uh, it would. He thinks that within a few hours, he'll be able to determine.
Okay.
What the, what the issues are after speaking with the fire department and the building inspector, uh, that it won't be, uh.
Yeah, yeah.
For a brief review at first.
Right.
Six hundred dollars at the most.
Okay, then I have no problem, I, that's, that's not a crazy number, is it? Not a crazy number.
It's a great number, it's a good number.
Yeah, I would say it, sometimes, yeah.
Uh, I don't want that to, to lead into a contract, because we, uh, we open the door, yeah.
Well, this is, this is, to be sure, before we proceed.
Yeah, exactly.
Start spending money, see where we are.
Right, and see if, if it's feasible to spend the money, absolutely, okay.
Right.
What do you envision this to, for, for fire engineers, John, and do you, this engineering study, what do you envision it?
One is to see if the current structure can handle a second floor, I mean, that's been the intent the whole time, is we wanna add on to the admin side and put a second floor on so that we can expand the bays themselves, and the only way to do that is to move everything so it's in one area.
Right.
But talking to some of the older town residents in town or around, they, there's some moments that that building cannot handle a second floor. So that's why we requested an engineering study, cause I don't wanna see money dumped into a building and then three years down the road, we're doing again to fix stuff that's happened because it's, that building settled.
I just wanna make sure that if we get an engineering study, that, that certainly the chief and, and you are satisfied with, you know, cause honestly, you know, you see all these new modern fire stations with the glass doors and they drive around the back and they drive right in, um, you know, bigger bays and, and all, you know, are we talking about, you know, taking part of that field or the, the slope and, and, and doing something like that? But I wanna put all the options on the table, cause I, 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 like you, do not wanna just limp along and put a fresh coat of paint on this.
I mean, the biggest thing right now is an engineering study to see if a second floor can go on the admin side.
And what we need is a basic, quick and dirty of what we have, what is possible, and it's not limited to a second floor, wherever that option came from.
Good, that's what I wanted to hear.
Um, we're looking at, but a basic, quick and dirty, we don't need architectural renderings, we don't need, you know, the dog and pony shop.
Good.
And the people that know the most about that building are the two chiefs, they also happen to be very skilled at construction. So, again, I don't wanna be paying someone to come in and ask questions and tell us what we already know. They're way far down the road, just jump in and start there and go from there.
Well, that's, I think, that's Martha, part of, part of JSN is a quick and dirty.
Yeah, Eric, Eric recommended it and covered it, right?
I think we don't need a, we're gonna be on.
No, and I also don't need, you know, a report this thing.
No.
In triplicate and copies everywhere and charges for that, it's unnecessary.
Well, we like JSN, Eric, who I think we, we trusted, recommended Summit, could we get, could we get some kind of a ballpark figure from Summit for the same type of evaluation? And then, and then we can make a decision, you know, honestly, I, I did, you know, all I've heard is JSN and Summit, nobody's even talked about HSS, so. Did, did we narrow it down to two tonight?
Yes, yes.
I would agree.
So let's, let's get a, 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 you know.
A correct estimate.
And Eric is, being the town engineer, knows the roads.
Yep.
And this equipment is on these roads all the time.
Right, yep.
So there's a tie, a direct tie there.
Right.
Okay.
Let, let's get something from, from Summit as well.
Okay.
Will do.
All right.
Thank you.
But, chief, I'd like you involved, no matter what firm we pick, um, shadowing them through and, and letting them know exactly what you want. Thanks.
And answer the question, don't pay them to find the answer, we don't need that, it's a waste of time and money.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to, uh, the PA grant application update, but just before we start, Paul, if you're here for the boats, we went over the boats.
Yep.
And adopted, Peter has a thing, and Peter is the new official dock master.
We nominated a young guy named Peter Welch to be dock master, yeah, I agree with that.
Do you have any questions, Paul, we can answer it now, or, if we have any questions, we try to answer them now, but I think we got everything resolved between Jason and.
Well, how far along are we with the rules, like, are these rules it now, or are they?
Yes.
Except for the change in a lot of the tracks.
Well, yeah, I mean, if you have an objection, let's.
No, nothing sprang out at me, I mean, some of it looks a little microfemantist, but, you know, it's okay.
Unfortunately, it's been developed from experience with dock.
Yeah.
Where, uh.
If there have been issues, that.
Yes, each one of those items that were added, it has been an issue.
I just, that's fine, no, no comment, no objection.
I've had updates, I mean, we, we changed it for twenty tracks versus twelve, we added, put a sign up there for town people only, cause I guess there's a sign needed down there, that was basically what we did, right? Okay, unless you got a problem.
Okay, then we'll move on to, uh, the, the grant application update, Martha.
The board has in their packets the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds list, Cheryl and I are making our way through this, but, uh, if you look in your packets, you'll see a sign here tab and, and that same tab, and it's a list of all of the contract requirements that we now have to, um, put, put into all of our vendor contracts as a result of this, and also because the town, uh, took that ashkosh plow years ago, uh, anything from the federal government.
Now, on, has this, has this.
Requires these contract requirements, so I just wanted the board to go into the size wide open as we move forward.
So why don't we take federal money and get anything we gotta have, we're gonna have it, so why don't we comply with it?
This is for the eighty-five thousand.
You gotta.
Right.
Eighty-five thousand is, is worth it. Discussion questions?
Is this gonna be something we probably do this, Martha, on all, all the federal grants and stuff?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first.
I'm sorry, too, uh, is this something we have to do with every grant that comes through for bids?
Yes.
Okay. Doesn't surprise me.
Okay, we'll move on from that, General Sullivan Bridge update.
The DOT had received this letter from the historic district commission, and I just wanted to make sure the selectmen saw it as well, we received it from DOT discussing the options for the depot. I, uh, will remind the board that you sent a letter to DOT saying that the town just cannot take on another building to repair and that you would prefer instead that the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that they had originally offered be allowed to be used for the refurbishment of an already existing town historic building.
This is just the information, right?
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jason, do you have something, quickly, uh, to be honest, if you.
I, I was just, I've been following all the hearings, including DOT, and I was just wondering, if there's any change in the town position. I thought I'd come up with a brilliant idea of loading that, the, the toll booth across to the, the part of Hilton Park, um, uh, only be, be reminded by an honorable selectman that he had come up with that idea fifty years ago in refurbishing, uh, the puddle docks and the buildings down there, so, um, I just stepped down a notch with the, with my quote brilliant idea that it was fifty years old, but I, I, I just thought that the town might be in a better position to actually ensure preserving that building by, by suggesting to them that they use the people taking down the bridge, loading the cross, that they use the money to actually create a high site that's part of the park. Newington has always, all the selectmen from back in, in two thousand, uh, have always resisted creating parking areas next to the bridge because it becomes an encumbrance for the police staff to patrol it, for people parking there, and so instead, we opted to support a series of, um, treatment ditches along the, the, the west side of the bridge in order for it to be, uh, to, to clear, to clear out the runoff of the bridge before it went into the hill. So, so my thought, although we might lose the historic building on our property, at least it would be, have a better chance of being preserved because if the DOT puts it up for sale, I think we've all seen the experience that if a town can't take care of it, and I think that's, it was explained very well by Ted at the meeting, is that the town seven hundred just can't refurbish an entire building for history's sake and create a park on, on the western, uh, acre. It's just not feasible, uh, it's a state, uh, activity, and if they're not willing to do it here, then, um, we'd love to preserve the building across the river in Dover as part of the existing park that's over there, so I think that would be a much stronger position and the, and the property then could, could actually, if they wanted to keep it part of the turnpike, they could, but if they did wanna sell it, it could go back as part of the industrial park that is a revenue source for the town. That was more, my suggesting that might be a, a better position for the town to show compatibility with how the, the bridge, uh, and the crossings has evolved as it's grown quicker and deeper over the years, so.
If, uh, just a little piece of good news, the DOT did specifically mention in their latest treatise that on page six in your packets, uh, E, little three, I, the property will be conveyed with the Historic Preservation Covenant, so if they do end up selling it, they say that they will make sure to convey it with a Historic Preservation Covenant that will be held by shipper, so, it might be.
Yeah, another one would be, be a long, a bit of a quarter on the end of it.
Thank you, Chris, anything else, uh, on this we bring up, just something, anything else on the agenda?
I have two items.
Yeah?
The board received my email today from the board authority, they're, uh, applying for a federal dock expansion, because right now, you know, the container ships or large ships that come to the dock, it's too short with the new, uh, bridge in place, so they've asked you to support, uh, the grant, and I believe you actually already signed that letter.
Yes.
And then, secondly, Fox Point Rental House, uh, the boiler flooded again down in the basement of the house, this is, we've had this happen numerous times and the building inspector is asking, uh, to get quotes for, to put a bump out in the back of the house that would include the, uh, boiler and the hot, hot line there.
Yeah.
Yeah. So he'd like to present those to the board.
Yes.
Why don't you just put it in that back room down there?
Well, I don't look at the back with the, the, you know, we gotta hold it out on the basement, just to flood it out of there, so this is a suggestion that came up.
Plus it's gas and it goes out, it's not as dangerous.
Yeah.
I agree.
So just have, have a look at it, Paul, so.
Will do.
All right, who's gonna look at it?
Well, that, that, shall we do that?
Okay, yeah, as I said, do it, because if they can, can ready to put upstairs, water heater, and that back woman there, sound everybody's here.
Well, pull a bump out and it won't take any space in the house.
Okay, just thinking about the cost, okay, all right.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll mention that to him.
Yeah.
Okay, and I request a non-public session for legal.
Okay.
When the board's ready.
Make a motion and we go into a non-public session?
I'll second that.
Yes, make it, yep.
Roll call.
Aye.
Yeah, aye, aye, five forty-four or off.
And there's no other business come up, we're just going to non-public and then we'll be filing generally after so, but.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations, dock master.
Thank you.
The other guy you gotta call, not a right.
Can you give him a call, Jason?
Yeah, yeah. Did you get a P S R issue?
Number nine meter.
Yeah.
Eight or ten or nine.
Because Chip said.
Chip, Chip said, I said nine foot.